Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority of Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Now, please stand, and we're going to have a video play the National Anthem, and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
All right, set.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, now is the time for our moment of solemn expression, and we're once again really pleased to be joined by Calvary Chapel Pastor Emeritus Dave Mann. So Pastor Emeritus, when did you acquire that title?
That title? It goes back to May of 2020.
May of 2020?
May of 2020. That completed my 34 years at Calvary Chapel Costa Mesa, but yeah. But I'm continuing on in doing ministry service here in the Southern California area. And I am also presently with The Faith Divisions of Lionsgate and Sony with their film, their films that they make, and films that come out in theaters, and I'm doing church screenings around Southern California. That's my territory.
All right.
But you know what? Sharon, it was so good to be here with you guys again and to see you, whether it's a visit like tonight, you know, that's somewhat short. I think about you, and I do pray for you when I'm alone and by myself or going somewhere. And I've been present, I used to live right over here, grew up right on Clearbrook, right across the street over here. We used to watch the helicopter come and go and walk to school when, across the street over here at the fairgrounds, it was just a dirt lot. But there was a little bit of asphalt, just like there is now when you look across the street. And one of our neighbors snuck a go-kart over there. He never let us ride it, but he drove it pretty fast. And so we've seen a lot of changes over the many years, over 55-plus years, I'm sure. I've kind of lost count, but over 55 years here in Costa Mesa with all of you and seeing a lot of different faces, too, up here on the boards, you know? But you guys are great, and I pray for, we pray now for the city and for all of you. Father, we just bow our heads in prayer. And Lord, we recognize, Father, once again, the assembly here in this chamber and with all the important people and special people and people, Lord, that are loved and people that are depended upon through all the citizens that live here in Costa Mesa. We pray for special blessing upon the mayor, the entire council, the entire working staff here at the city, fire department, all of them, the police department, all of the police department, all the heads, Lord, and the water department, Lord, here in the city of Costa Mesa, help and guide and direct them, Lord. They need, they need that, they need to keep pumping water. And, Lord, we ask that you would continue to pour out not only your presence, but your favor upon us, Lord, as we serve others and serve you to the best of our ability. We ask this, in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Amen. All right.
Amen, amen. Thank you very much, and thanks for that background. That's great.
All right. One of these days soon, because things are kind of getting a little bit more towards a legacy for me, I want to get a picture with all of you someday, so I'll have to set that up with the clerk.
Yeah, let's make sure, let's make sure Councilmember Marr is here and, yeah, see if you, try to pitch some movie to Lionsgate about the Costa Mesa City Council.
Well, I can do that. I can do that. I'm working with a great film right now, two great films. Reagan's coming out August 30th, and I'm doing private screenings a week from tonight at Big Newport in Fashion Island. If you guys want to go, you have them call me.
All right.
I'll get you in, it's free.
Thank you. That's right. It's very generous of you. All right, okay, now, so we have, we have one, wait a minute, we need to do the roll call first, right? Let's do the, let's do the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all council is present except for Councilmember Marr.
Closed session report, Ms. Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action was taken in closed session. This evening, council staff was given direction.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one item. It's a proclamation for 2024 Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And tonight, we recognize and celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This month serves as an opportunity for us to reflect on the vibrant heritage and contributions Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made to American history, society, and the cult and culture, and to our own Costa Mesa community. As we embark on this month-long celebration, it is essential to acknowledge the significant strides made by organizations dedicated to advancing the rights and voices of the Asian American community. Joining us tonight is an organization that has been at the forefront of this crucial work. Asian Americans Advancing Justice, AAJC, is a nonprofit organization focused on advancing civil and human rights for Asian Americans and promoting fair and equitable, and a fair and equitable society for all. It engages in advocacy, public policy, and community education on Asian hate, housing protection, voting rights, and media diversity. AAJC has assisted over 16,000 individuals through its California helplines, offering support in eight Asian languages and dialects. To accept tonight's proclamation is managing attorney Joseph Navales. Mr. Navales, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to thank...
Wait, wait, before you, you don't have the floor. I'm taking it back, because I've now introduced you, but I want to read from this proclamation, then you'll have the floor. Let me read from this. This is proclamation the staff prepared and I, and I signed. Since 1978, we have celebrated Asian American Pacific Islanders Heritage in May. In 1992, Congress officially designated May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, celebrating the significant role Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played in the creation of a dynamic American society through their contributions to the arts, commerce, government, and sciences. Orange County is home to the third-largest Asian American population nationwide, with almost 800,000 Asian Americans and over 20,000 Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders countywide. In Costa Mesa, nearly 10% of Costa Mesa residents identify as Asian, Native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander. And it doesn't, it doesn't say that in the proclamation, but outside of the Marshall Islands, Costa Mesa has the most Marshallese residents. It's, there's over 600 Marshallese residents in Costa Mesa. Okay, this, this year's 2024 Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month theme is bringing histories, shaping our future. It embodies the spirit of the collective journey, one rooted in resilience and hope, and encourages the forging of international connections to honor the past and pave a lasting path forward. Now, therefore, I, John Stevens, the mayor of the great city of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Costa Mesa, and I urge all residents in our city to join me in this special observance. So now, Mr. Navales, now, I'm serious, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the city of Costa Mesa for this special proclamation. Our office has been in Orange County since 2006, starting from a one-person office, and over the years, it's grown to over 20 employees, serving the Orange County folk in probonos, providing pro bono services in immigration, housing, and family law services. And one of the biggest impacts that we've had here in Orange County is being able to naturalize over 450 Orange County residents to become United States citizens, many of whom were from Costa Mesa as well. And thank you again to mayor, city council members, and the city of Costa Mesa for this proclamation and recognizing the importance of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, their contributions, skills, stories, histories, and amazing food, too. So thank you again, and I highly appreciate it.
Yeah, you're very, you're very welcome, and thank you for coming here. And yeah, we are definitely the ramen capital of, of, of Orange County. If you look up Costa, the food in Costa Mesa Ramen pops up. And then in terms of, the other thing, too, is, I don't know if you know the Sacioca family, but Sacioca family, who's developed a lot of Costa Mesa, they were interned in Manzanar with my wife's grandparents and father. And then George's grandfather came out, and he did farming, what do you call that, farming on a margin? And he bought up a lot of property, including Costco and Fountain Valley, and then a lot of the places that have been developed in Costa Mesa. So it's a rich history. So thank you. Let's take a photo.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, so now's the time for public comments. Public comments, you get three minutes. You could talk about anything other than what's on the main agenda, which are only two items, so you could talk about the consent calendar or anything else. And at two minutes, you'll hear a ding. At three minutes, your mic will be cut off. And then, once we're done with the folks in the chambers, please line up to be ready to speak. Then we'll go to Zoom, and people on Zoom, they only get three minutes as well, but you won't hear, you might not hear the ding. And then I guess it's star nine to raise your hand and star six to talk. Okay, who wants to start? You have the floor, ma'am.
My name is Karen Millard. I spoke at the last meeting about getting a refund from Costa Mesa Sanitary District. I had to stop a few sentences short and didn't get a chance to thank before, thank the council before leaving the podium. Please forgive me. For background, my property was incorrectly assessed by Costa Mesa Sanitary District at a two-unit rate for over 23 years, resulting in being overcharged $6,000 in excess trash and sewer fees. I could have discovered this billing error years ago if the sanitary district gave customers the needed information to check charges. Sanitary district charges come on the county tax bill, which does not show how the charges are calculated or where the charges originate. How do you know you're not being overcharged? Or you? Or you? You don't. Keeping property owners in the dark about trash and sewer charges make us all ripe for getting ripped off. We shouldn't have to blindly trust that local government has correct property information and is charging correctly. Give us the information to check those charges. It's bad enough when a business overcharges, but our own local government? We should expect more of and be able to trust our local government. A business would fully refund or credit me where they didn't actually provide a service. The sanitary district refuses to do the same. Tell me where I'm being unreasonable in demanding a refund. What is so wrong about refunding what they have wrongly taken from my family all these years? Where is their contrition? How would you feel if this happened to you? How do you know it hasn't? I realize the city does not have authority over the sanitary district. The truth is, no one does. That's the problem. According to Chairman Chad Wankie of Orange County Sanitation District, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District is not accountable to anyone for accuracy of billing. That's not how government entities are supposed to serve the public. With nobody to oversee them, they can overcharge customers without consequence, and they do. You may ask, without authority over the sanitary district, what can city council do? I have a suggestion that would make you all heroes of the Costa Mesa public. Please consider drafting and passing a resolution insisting Costa Mesa Sanitary District fully refund any property owner who's been incorrectly assessed and send statements to customers explaining charges. I'm sure I'm not the only one who's been incorrectly assessed. Property owners will value the ability to check their charges after all these years of not being able to. Sanitary district has their legal counsel. I have none. I'm in a David versus Goliath fight. Help me put an end to the despicable billing practices of Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Much of what city councils do, do not really solve the problems that their constituents face, but this is a real problem caused by local government facing real...
Hold on for a second. I don't know what exactly happened, but can you pause her time, please?
It's done.
Oh, it's done? Oh, I didn't hear any dings. Did she go three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, yeah, you are done, but we'll, we'll come to the, we'll get to the ding part. Sorry, you didn't hear a ding, but apparently your time is up.
Thank you. I will leave my contact information on the list of the overcharges on the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we good with the ding? Okay, so you, you have to kind of watch, and I'll pay more attention. I'll go like this at one.
For the one minute?
Uh huh.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Lynn Redman from Costa Mesa. This is the third in a four-part series regarding my son, Christian Redman's Fairview Park Coastalivo project. He started in 2014. You'll go back and see the April 16th and May 7th council meetings to get the full gist of where we are right now. Christian did four projects at Fairview Park, for which he received the 4-H Emerald Clover, the BSA Eagle, the Venturing Summit, and of course, the Sea Scout Quartermaster. The compilation of these four projects plus two more venturing projects he did at the Heritage Museum of Orange County garnered him the BSA Distinguished Conservation Service Award, which was formerly called the Hornet Day Prize, which fewer scouts in the last 100 years, over and above any other scouting achievement, have achieved. Very highly distinguished honor to receive that. Now, next time, next time, I'm going to continue with his Oak Tree Project, the photo, which is somewhere, he's getting it, I guess. Back in May 2nd, Christian and I met with Brian Gruner, the director of parks, Kelly Dalton, the Fairview Park administrator, and others to resolve the situation going on at the Coastalivo project. And the result of that meeting basically was that, based on Kelly Dalton's input, we, my family, Christian, any of us, are no longer allowed to enter into the Coastalivo area. It's been turned over to a contractor, endemic...
Ding.
Okay, endemic ICRE, run by Barry Nairhouse. So now, the, now that also area has no longer been called the Coastalivo project, it's now considered a sage scrub area. So I want to basically embellish on that the next time I come up at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Flo, you have the floor.
I'm here to thank Public Works for all their efforts to slow down drivers in Costa Mesa, especially the latest project on West 19th with the new bollards and bike lane approaching Placentia. I have been walking the streets of Costa Mesa for 57 years. I average between 30 to 60 miles a month. I am constantly threatened by reckless drivers who are speeding. Slowing down traffic with bike lanes and bollards is a plus for people like me. I have a magnet on the back of my car. It says, "Caution, senior driver." I also have a gizmo that my husband, God rest his soul, bought for me years ago, a NUVI, that tells me what street I'm on and what the speed limit is. Drivers in Costa Mesa are using our streets as speedways. Several years ago, I posted a slowdown sign on Fair Drive, and Costa Mesa PD took notice of that sign, and they posted traffic officers for a period of two hours. They cited 18 drivers for speeding on Fair Drive between Harbor and Fairview. One of the drivers was doing 74 miles an hour. That's over 30 miles over the speed limit. Projects like West 19th with the bollards and the bike lane slow down drivers. This last week, I was on the north, excuse me, the southwest corner of Harbor and Fair, waiting to cross north toward the northwest corner. There was a pedestrian and a person in a wheelchair waiting to cross Harbor. When they got the walk signal, the driver who was entering Harbor to go southbound on Harbor from Fair Drive cut across the crosswalk and swerved around them to speed on south. We need slower speed limits in Costa Mesa. We need narrower street lanes, and we need projects like West 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I see that there's a bunch of students in the audience tonight. If there's any aspiring filmmakers out there that want to make a riveting documentary, look into Measure Y and the betrayal by the city council via Measure K. It's quite interesting. Anyways, I'm here to talk about a few things. First thing I'd like to talk about is all-American asphalt. They need to be removed as a responsible bidder off of our list. I know what they did on Harbor. I've also had experience with what they did on my street. They ended up cutting corners on the curbs. It took four months of my time to get that fixed, four months of valuable time. And this company should no longer do business with our city. I believe in looking through the contract, they list this city as a reference. So at the very least, that needs to be pulled, but this city should not be doing business with them. I am, am here also to speak on West 19th Street. And let me pull this up so I don't make any mistakes. So I'm impacted by West 19th Street. Because of what you've done to West 19th Street, I now have cut through traffic. I have cars speeding down my street. So whatever the intention was of West 19th Street, I now see the negative impacts. My neighbors see the negative impacts. It is not a well-thought-out project. So let me read what I wrote. "The city needs to fix West 19th Street. It needs to be two lanes again. The West 19th Street enhancement, as the city calls it, is not popular. It is not functional. It has negatively impacted adjacent neighborhoods. There are legit safety concerns, and it is a monkey wrench for the city council's high-density goals." I do know that the enhanced West 19th Street is unpopular. I ask people what they think about it. I ask clerks that work on stores off West 19th Street. I ask my neighbors. I ask people I met while passing out flyers about fixing West 19th Street. I ask my friends. "If you want to fix West 19th Street, please join my Facebook group. Let's fix West 19th Street." I hear about how West 19th Street is unfunctional. I know it used to function. People tell me that, "What's wrong with West 19th Street?" It has created more problems than it's solved. One of the problems it solved is trying to, one of the problems it's trying to solve has actually been solved. Lots of people unknowingly solve this problem. You see it all the time. Imagine solving a problem you didn't know existed. Riding your bike safely down an adjacent, parallel residential street. I think that solves a safety problem on West 19th Street. Councilmember Reynolds, at the hearing about the senior center development project, mentioned that she doesn't even ride her own bike lane down West 19th Street. The problem it did solve was at Wallace. Adjacent neighborhoods now have more cut-through traffic. A clerk at the autism shared that he lived on this street behind McDonald's, and he's noticed it's gotten a lot busier with traffic. A couple of my neighbors independently verified this when they talked about cutting through the 18th Street. Please fix...
Trying to find a ding on my phone. You have the floor, Raina.
Thank you. Good evening, city council and staff. For those of you who don't know me in the room, my name is Raina Cuthill, and I am the neighboring initiative director of Love Costa Mesa. And I'm here simply to say a huge thank you to our city staff, to leadership, many who are in this room, and council for supporting and attending this year's seventh annual Love Costa Mesa Day. For those of you who have never been and who don't know what this, this day is about, this day represents unity among our churches, businesses, nonprofits, schools, city hall and residents coming together to make a difference. This year, handwritten encouragement notes were made for crossing guards. Murals were painted at schools and nonprofits. 50 trees were planted in our neighborhoods. Senior neighbors were blessed with gardening and weeding. Hygiene kits were donated for the homeless. Fences were built, flowers were planted, and lives were changed. I want to thank our restaurants, who each donated 200 meals to feed over 1,000 volunteers; our financial sponsors, who made this day possible; our musicians and talents for making the day come alive; our project leaders for their deep love for Costa Mesa and its people; our volunteers for giving of their time; and lastly, our planning committee, who devoted three long months to make this day a reality. I just want to give a shout out to our city manager's office, Rock Harbor Church, Calvary Chapel, Harbor Trinity, Christ Lutheran, Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce, Project Hope Alliance, Costa Mesa Foundation, Shields Coteau Thrive and Financial, and Love in Motion for serving on this year's committee. If you would like to serve on next year's committee, I would absolutely love to have you. You can find my contact on our website at lovecostamesa.org. And if you missed it, save the date for next year, May 17th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. Thank you very much. Great, it was a great event. Yes, ma'am? Yes.
Did my time start?
It hasn't started yet. As soon as you start talking, she'll start it.
Okay. Hello, dear City of Costa Mesa officials and community members. I would like to express my concern for the newly renovated bike lane on 19th Street in Costa Mesa. As much as I advocate as well as support a healthy lifestyle for cyclists, I am very concerned about the fact that it will, in fact, take Costa Mesa PD longer time to arrive to Whittier School if there is, God forbid, a mass shooting. I'm not here today to get answers right away. I'm simply here as a concerned mom for the students and staff that attend Whittier Elementary School. for the students and staff that attend Whittier Elementary School. I honestly don't know what protocol is. However, can we please look into a practice run to see if we can get in touch with our amazing superintendent and assistant superintendent of Newport Mesa Unified School District so that we can do a practice run to see how long it would take Costa Mesa PD to get to Whittier School if there is, God forbid, a mass shooting or any type of health emergency issue? What route do they take since the newly renovated bike lane installed with one lane was taken away? Is that the route Costa Mesa PD takes? Because I do believe it was a couple of weeks ago, there were helicopters in the air and there were five suspects being chased. And I was caught in the middle of the chase. I have it recorded. I was very scared. I was in between the airplane park and going on to the 55 freeway. And I witnessed the policemen tackle down these men. And so I don't know why it took so long for Costa Mesa PD to get these five men apprehended. The second question I have is, can we take the middle embankment out and add the bike lane there? That way, we can merge the same way or have the bike lane where the fire department and police can drive through to get to Whittier School? Our community is not utilizing the bike lanes the way our beautiful Arliss Reynolds envisioned it to be. I rarely see any bikers use those bike lanes unless it's on 4th of July. And I've lived here for 42 years of my life. Actually, I'm 43, so 43 years. But I don't really remember the first six years of my life. The main safety issue I have are the e-bikers. Most of the e-bike riders, they don't even have helmets. It really does petrify me. My daughter's 14, and she's been begging me for an e-bike over my dead body. I'm sorry. There are not enough laws to implement anybody being prosecuted if my daughter gets ran over and murdered because she's on an e-bike going 40 miles plus an hour down Placentia Avenue.
That's, yeah, that's three minutes. Thank you. Okay, David, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to give a comment in support of our Public Works team and all of the efforts that they're doing regarding active transportation in our city. I am part of a group called Strong Towns Orange County, which advocates for these kinds of things. And Costa Mesa is often seen as an example of what we can do across the county. What we have done on our roads, on Bristol, on 19th, on Placentia, these are the kinds of things that people are seeing, and they're trying to implement in other cities across our county. We are an example for other places, and I think that that's such a great thing to hear. Regarding the 19th Street specifically, is it perfect? Well, I'm going to say no. But like for me, I think you all know me well enough that to know that I cycle pretty much everywhere, right? So before on 19th Street, what I used to do, even though there were signs on the sidewalk that said, "Don't bike on the sidewalk", what did I do? I biked on the sidewalk because it was unsafe on 19th Street. And now, because of these new improvements that our wonderful Public Works team has put in, I now am on the street instead of with the pedestrians on the sidewalk next to the senior center. I think that that's a very good improvement. I think that that is improving safety for our pedestrians and for our cyclists to make sure that there aren't e-bike riders on the sidewalk mixing with people who are moving slowly and walking. So I think that's a very good thing. And I'm very hopeful for further improvements to 19th Street, such as getting those bike lanes all the way up to Newport Boulevard so that we can connect and further improve upon our great active transportation network that is a beacon for Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that appears like we've covered everybody in the chambers. How about on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and if you wish to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Or star nine.
First speaker is Roberto, please.
Roberto, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm mayor and city council. This is Roberto with Resilience Orange County. Sorry, couldn't be there in person. But I wanted to, we have finally opened our office in Costa Mesa on Harbor and Adams, and we hosted an open house last week. And I extend the invitation for you all to visit us and see our new office. A lot of folks have been coming through. And second thing is that I want to also direct my comments to Councilmember Chavez. We had spoken to some of the resident leaders off of Center Street and the alleyway, Plummer Street. And I kind of shared with them, you know, some of the work that we have been doing and in relationship to improving the conditions on Plummer Street, the alleyway. And they would actually like for you to come down and host some sort of a community conversation circle with the residents just to update them on the process and the timeline for any planned improvements. And so happy to work with your office to see how we can coordinate a date and time and invite some of the resident leaders from Center Street to kind of attend. So folks are very happy with sort of knowing that you are working towards improving that alleyway. Also, I also wanted to, as I've been sharing, it's been very difficult to follow up with the city when the agendas are posted the Friday before. In the city of Santana, the agenda is posted 10 days ahead of the agenda, ahead of the city council meeting. And that time gives the public notice as well as being able to read the agenda and be prepared. So please, I encourage you all to publish the city agenda sooner. And I also wanted to share that we are working with Las Promotoras de Salud Juana to conduct a Know Your Rights training, a tenant Know Your Rights training in the Mesa del Mar neighborhood. We've been hearing of evictions taking place in that neighborhood, and it worries us, Resilience Orange County and Las Promotoras de Salud. And so we're working together to invite legal service providers to do a Know Your Rights training in the area to let them know of the city's tenant protection ordinance as well as city resources for tenants. So just wanted to give that update. I'm sure I'll reach out to Sergio and the team in relationship to, you know, maybe having them present as well. But those are my comments for tonight, and thank you all so much. Bye.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark.
Mark, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, sorry, good evening, council. Yeah, I just wanted to speak in, yeah, in support of the West 19th project. And more importantly, I just want to contextualize a few things for the council or members of the public who don't think about this as much as I do. The number one cause of death for children in California is motor vehicles. The number one cause of death for all people from the age of 5 to 54 years old is motor vehicles. Seniors are living six years past their ability to drive on average. And in the proximity and the area of this project is future senior housing, the current senior center, and the tower on West 19th, which serves as a senior affordable housing. We need to be doing something serious about our active transportation or pedestrian safety issues in our state. One more thing to note is that pedestrian deaths have risen 78% since 2010. We need to take this seriously. We need to do something. And so I really applaud, I applaud this council for putting in a bike lane, for making the street frankly just more pleasant to walk on now. All of those people, including myself, that were biking on the sidewalk now have a lane to bike there with so that those, you know, probably a little bit irresponsible kids with e-bikes are actually now biking in the actual bike lane rather than competing for the pedestrian space on the sidewalk. So I want to applaud this project. I want to applaud the continued mission of this council to make our streets safer, more livable, more climate-friendly, and more enjoyable to recreate and to move and to get about our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers.
Okay, closed public comment. And so now we'll go to the council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. And we'll start out with District 5, Councilmember Arliss Reynolds. Got it. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. We're good.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for all the public comments. Welcome to everyone here. Wanted to start with a few thank yous. Love Costa Mesa Day was fantastic. I missed the morning, but I was able to come in the afternoon, and it's just really a nice community celebration of volunteerism. It's wonderful to see that event grow. And I know it's a big lift for staff, but I think a very worthwhile one. So thank all of you for all of your time on a weekend for that event. The day following, on Sunday, we had a, I guess, second of its kind, but a newer event over at Canyon Park on the west side within the Freedom Homes neighborhood called Songs in the Canyon. We stressed a little bit on this one, and I want to thank staff for doing that. In particular, Deputy City Manager Alma Reyes and our Director of Parks and Community Service, Brian Gruner, for being really creative in approaching that event. It's bigger than any event we've had in Canyon Park before. I don't know if you were able to make it out there, but I want to share that it was a wonderful event. Glowing feedback from everyone there. I've had texts and messages through all the social medias and emails from residents saying, "That was so cool. When are we doing it again?" So really, really positive feedback. It was a nice way to spend a Sunday afternoon in the park to mark the kickoff of summer. So I know that organizers are interested in doing sort of an end-of-summer event, and we've talked about a holiday, sort of carols in the canyon kind of event. So we'll try to get planning on that with plenty of lead time. But that was fantastic, and I really just want to thank you for your open mind and creativity on that event in particular. I wasn't planning, but I will talk about West 19th since it is a project that certainly deeply involved in and very proud of. The speaker, Mark, who you heard calling in, stole all my stats about the importance of improving safety on our streets. The leading cause of death of children in the United States is vehicle violence. It's a major problem. And Mark shared the stats as we're trending in the wrong direction. We're actually, I think, the only country in the world trending in the wrong direction in terms of, we're getting worse. More pedestrians are getting killed on our streets than each year. And so it's a major issue. Several years ago, we did data analysis of where that danger is happening in Costa Mesa, and West 19th Street is one of the most dangerous places to walk and ride your bike in Costa Mesa. The design that was put together goes through very thorough review. There's lots of review with our, certainly our transportation engineers. There's some very rigid requirements that they have to follow to ensure safety. The reviews, the designs are reviewed by our public safety teams. So I just want to provide some assurances there. It's not an ad hoc effort. There were several community outreach meetings related to the design. Lots of review of the design. And I think we're entering the period where we're going to do some of our more detailed post-installation measurement data. But I know some of the early data is really promising in terms of safety numbers. As I mentioned, the data we had before showed that there's, this was one of the most dangerous places in our city in terms of injuries and collisions if you're on foot or on bike, all ages. And I believe we've had no incidents since the installation was put in. So a pretty promising affirmation of improved safety in that area. I bike and walk and drive that area every day. I live in the area. And I'll tell you, I see a lot of people using those streets. My mother, who would not bike on 19th prior, is willing to bike on 19th now. And that's, I think, really positive confirmation of not just the increased safety element, but how much more comfortable it is to be walking and biking there. We're not done. There's a lot more work to do to improve safety in our city for walking and biking, whether you're a kid walking to school, a mom walking her kid to school, someone biking to work. We have certainly other infrastructure projects that we're working on. We're also launching this weekend, maybe we had a soft launch, but launching this weekend a very, another word for robust, an exciting bicycle safety education program. So Saturday, I encourage you, anyone who's interested in bike safety, come out to the senior center for our bike safety education program. Staff has been working with a contractor for several months, putting this program together. We'll have courses for all ages, regular bikes and e-bikes, free bike repairs, bike helmets, and so on. So lots of really positive work, lots of good work to do, and appreciate all the feedback on that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up from District 4, Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you everyone for joining us today in the audience. Three quick updates, followed by response to public comment. First, last time I was here, I mentioned you had two community meetings coming up regarding parks in West Costa Mesa. Happy to say we've had those meetings, so I'll go down the list one by one. Last, two weeks ago, we had a meeting at Ketchikan Level Park. As you guys may know, that park's very important in Costa Mesa. It's a pocket park off of Victoria and Harbor Boulevard. There's two officers that passed away in line of duty here in Costa Mesa. We had over 30 people attend the meeting, giving feedback. We had a lot of kids mentioning what type of equipment they wanted to see. And I was really pleased to see that the children themselves were really leaning into the public safety aspect of that park. We had 30 members of the public attend. And again, I want to thank, I think, Manuel Pachonarius for the funding for that park. Last Friday, we had another park meeting, this time at Shalamar Park. Thanks to Senator Dave Min, who gave us money for that project as well. And we had over 126 people attend. It was an incredible show of community. I was there along with Councilmember Reynolds, and we saw a lot of community members come out, give their feedback. That park is really important to me. It's a crucial part of that community, and I'm happy to see the community bringing forth their ideas about how they want to see its history and its shape. So I look forward to seeing staff come back to another community meeting with the public, showing their ideas and continuing the conversation. I also wanted to commend and congratulate staff and the community for another great Love Costa Mesa Day. Every year it gets bigger, and this year was no exception. I had the pleasure of planting trees on Wallace and Shalamar alongside a few other students from Save Our Youth and West Coast of Mesa students. And it's always crazy, it's always crazy and great to see how service brings light to people. That was also another showcase of community. As people in the neighborhood saw us planting trees, they would join us. And that's just one microcosm of how great this event is. So I want to thank all who helped put it on. It's truly a testament to our community's love for itself and one another. In response to public comment from Resilience, yes, I'm happy to tour the new office. Congratulations on having a permanent home here in Costa Mesa. And also, I'm interested in having a community meeting with residents that live on Center Street. Quick update, I gave it last time, but I'll give it again. The city is currently looking at the parcels, seeing what we own, what we don't own. And we're coming up with strategies to see how we can mitigate the issues of trash being in the alleyway and the pavement not being up to par. I love dealing with infrastructure. I think people notice it the most in their quality of life. So happy to take the challenge on. And again, we ask for patience, but of course, we'll collaborate with everyone along the way. Finally, on West 19th Street, I also feel a need to comment on it just because it's part of it's in my district. I had the part of 19th Street from Placentia to Harbor. When I look at decisions, I always think about what the outcome is. I don't try to look at the process, but the outcome. And I think for me, the outcome has to be that we have a safe community where people can bike to school, to work, and be safe. And from my point of view, maybe just because of my age, and I know I don't know everything, but it's okay to make tweaks for things. So one I want to say is I'm committed to continuing the safety of bike networks. I know it's safe for our community. It's good for our community. But I also want to be mindful of residents' concerns. So if we're hearing about cut-through traffic, if we're hearing that something isn't working, I don't think it's an error to say, "Hey, we need to tweak it." The intent has to be everyone's safe, and I want that to be the case. So I think we should keep doing this. We need a better bike network, and we're on the path to do it. But as residents' concerns arise, the things we as staff can do to make it a little bit better, we should. Finally, with that, I also want to note, I'm looking forward to the e-bike ordinance coming to council. That's something that concerns me as well, with the students in their community not always following the rules and not knowing what the rules are. But with that, thanks everyone for your time, and have a great community meeting.
All right. Good job. So now from District 2, Councilmember Lauren Gamarros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a brief, brief couple of things to go over. I too did attend I Love Costa Mesa Day. And I must say, it was very well attended. And one thing that I did notice was there were a lot of young people there this time. And it, there were a lot of children there participating. I think that's really important, to bring unity to the community and involving the family. When I see that, it actually, it really warms my heart to know that we have such a tight-knit community and a strong presence here in the city. So I just want to thank everybody that participated. I know it takes a lot out of your day to do something like that. But in the end, it's very rewarding to know that you can give back any way that you can in your community. And to involve your family is important, too. So thank you, everyone who put that together. I just kind of want to tail off of Councilmember Chavez's comments about Ketchum Leibold Park. You know, I think I've said this before, but I just want to bring up again that I grew up with the Leibolds. When I was a kid, I grew up with Katie and Dave. They were friends of mine. We are next-door neighbors. And we used to always run outside at night when Mike was working. And he would shine the light on us. And I'm sure it put a big smile on his face to see a bunch of screaming kids waving their hands in the backyard of his house that he would shine the light on. So we have an opportunity with this park to do for him what he did for us, and that's shine a light on him. So I really look forward to what we can do to improve this park and see what the outcome is. Along with that, I also want to thank our police department for being there when the duty calls. And recently, we had an incident in which our police department had to go and cover something at UCI. I know it's really important to see our police department there, serving not only our community, but other communities that are in need. So I just want to thank them for going out there and doing that. Other than that, I have nothing else.
All right. Thank you very much. From District 1, Councilmember Don Harper.
Thank you. There was some data about number one cause of death for children. I'd love to, Councilmember Reynolds, if you'd share with me that. Because I find different data on the web, but I'm not disputing you. But what I am curious, I would like your feedback on at some point privately. What, why? Why are deaths going up with bike accidents? Because I look at what we're doing in Costa Mesa, and I'm concerned about the green paint that we put on the pavement and people thinking they're safe. And over time, people ignore it and drive over it. I know I do. And I'm concerned about that. And one other, Ms. Millard, I apologize. I offered to look into your issue, and I just found the email from a week ago. So I've got it, and I'll respond to you this week, and I'll see what I can do. First, I want to validate you're correct. If you are correct, I'll go further from there. But that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. So now our Mayor Pro Tem from District 6, Jeffrey Harland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks. So I'll start with a few weeks ago, May 9th, we had on the East Side our grand opening of Shake Shack on 17th Street. It was celebrated with much fanfare. The mayor, Councilmembers Gamarros and Chavez, and I participated in that. Everybody left very satisfied with their shakes, fries, and burgers. And so we welcomed them to the neighborhood, a much welcomed addition to 17th Street. Again, on Love Costa Mesa Day, what I would describe as a soul-satisfying event. It's just so great to see everybody out there and volunteering. I had the pleasure of spending the morning at Woodland Avenue Elementary, where my kids went to school. And this project was actually kind of fun. It was replacing the existing raised garden beds, which I remember when they were actually built in 2011, when my kids were at school there. Again, it's great to see that investment from the community. I met a bunch of parents and young kids participated, even some who were planning on going to school next year. There were some real small ones, so it's great to get them started early. Following that, the mayor and I attended a great event at Recoup, which is a gym on Wilson and Fairview. They were hosting their annual Push-Ups for Charity event to benefit the boot campaign, which serves veterans. I know they surpassed their goal of $15,000. A really great, fun event. Had a lot of local vendors, probably 80-plus people. Somebody wants to join me next year for doing the actual push-ups? Raise your hands and get in shape. And then, just this past weekend, I attended the International Shopping Center Conference with the mayor and some staff in Las Vegas. It's an annual trip that we do where we meet with property owners, especially related to shopping centers. We meet with developers, home builders, different kinds of retailers, to get a real good sense of what is, where people are thinking of investing in Costa Mesa. And I'm pleased to report that people are really looking at us very seriously. In fact, the story with Shake Shack is that that started with a conversation at ICSC a few years ago. I do want to go back to Shake Shack one more time and offer my thanks again to staff, especially planning and building staff. The project team had nothing but great things to say about our city processing that application. So I want to make sure that they're recognized for that. And then lastly, for the city manager, if we could get a report on Harper Park and the status of that agreement we have with the school district. I know our police have been providing the park rangers there to monitor. I believe that six-month trial period is up. So I've been getting inquiries from neighbors about what's next. And I'd like to see how we can move forward with that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm the last one to speak. I want to thank again Love Costa Mesa Day. It's true, it gets better every year. And thank you, Raina, and your whole group and everything you do. It's not just Love Costa Mesa Day. It's 365 days a year providing to our community. And we can't take that for granted. There are very few cities that have an organization that embraces the city with love. And we're lucky to have it, and it's a great thing. Thank you. I'm glad that Councilmember Gamarros brought up the mutual aid that was provided at UC Irvine by our police department and police departments all around our area. And I was at a panel with the mayor of Newport Beach, the Mayor Pro Tem of Irvine, and the mayor of Tustin the next day. And we were uniform in our appreciation and our, of course, dedication to mutual aid. Because something happens at UCI today, something's going to happen in Costa Mesa tomorrow. It's only a matter of time, and we're going to need that support, both on the police and the fire side. And of course, our fire department is really involved in mutual aid, not just locally, but all throughout the state. We did go to Vegas. That was a very successful trip. It's important to hear what's going on in our shopping, with our shopping centers and in that community, listen to the brokers, listen to the property owners, listen to the people that run our shopping centers. That's really the lifeblood. You know, when we talk about the budget, which we're talking about at this time of year, without our shopping centers, without the people that invest in that and that make that go, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we can do in Costa Mesa. There's an event that's coming up on Memorial Day. Memorial Day is Monday, of course. So I want everybody to have a blessed Memorial Day. And there is an event, it's an annual event. It's at Harbor Lawn and Mount Olive, put on by the Freedom Committee. It starts at 11 o'clock. And our police department, along with the Noble Cause Foundation and also our fire department, always participates in that, and I'm going to be there. So what I want to do to end this is to remember a really good friend of Costa Mesa, a great community guy, John McLuckie, who died on May 16th. He was, yeah, I've known John, I kind of figured out, when did I meet John? It seems like I've known him forever. We met when our boys were on a little T-ball team called the Red Sox. His son JT and my son Nate. That was in about 2000. Then I, in, I think about 2003, I had, I had his son JT on my Mariners team in minor A. And he was a very exciting young player. I think he was about nine years old. I mean, his strikeouts were more exciting than most kids' home runs. I mean, this kid could swing the bat. And with great freedom and joy. And that comes from having a good parents, including John, a great father. And then, if you guys can see the monitors, I want to put up the next slide. So this is a very important thing. This is John all the way on the right. And he was the assistant coach on the 2005 TOC champions. And this was like a story out of Hoosiers. Back then, we had the American League and the National League, and nobody ever thought Costa Mesa American League, which only had two teams, would win the TOC. But they won it that year. And that was the only flag that would fly for many years at Costa Mesa. And so there's John all the way to the right. And then the next is John's son, JT McLuckie, number 16, getting his medal from Jeff Hirsch, who sadly also died of cancer some time ago. He was, lived in Andreas District on San Juan. Anyway, so, but there they are. And you can see Tyler Schefner, I had him. Nate Bonkanoi was on my team. Jake Comer was on my baseball and basketball team. These kids are all in their 30s. They have kids of their own now. Time goes on. Anyway, so he also was my neighbor. He lived on, John McLuckie lived on Shantar. And so I want to read just, there he is with his buddies. I'm going to read what Costa Mesa Little League wrote about him. John was an umpire at, this is another personal reflection. He was an umpire in District 62 for many years. These are volunteer umpires, these three guys here. John's all the way to the right. These guys don't get paid a penny. They give of their weekends, they give of their evenings, just for kids. So here's what I received from the Little League president. "Our hearts are broken because we've lost a friend, but he's no longer dealing with the treatments and discomfort. John was a Costa Mesa resident for 30-plus years. He was a true servant and had a kind and generous heart. Over the years, John coached his three sons and won the TOC championship for Costa Mesa American Little League, which I showed you. He then umpired an uncountable number of games after his coaching days and has served as league treasurer, helping build registration and filling many thankless organizational duties from 2007 until the present. John was a dedicated member of the Costa Mesa Little League family and often boasted wherever he journeyed about the good things happening in Costa Mesa Little League, like a proud father, with pictures at the ready. You could always find that familiar blue VW bus parked at the Costa Mesa High School field, like right behind the tennis courts. The Little League fireworks stand or the District 62 Little League fields while he was umpiring. It was all truly John's personal field of dreams. John could be found traveling the USA to cheer on players he coached or colleagues wherever they journeyed and in whatever sport or activity they played. John is survived by his wife Kathy and his sons JT and Tyler and Daniel and his grandson James." So it's not on there, but if you want to pay your respects to John, there's a service on June 1st at 3:30 PM at the Lighthouse Community Church at 301 Magnolia Street in Costa Mesa. So we'll adjourn in honor and memory of John McLuckie. Ms. Gallardo-Daly, do you have a city manager report? Oh, sorry. You need, you need a mic? You got it.
I'm new to the controls.
Yes.
Don's helping me out. Well, I'm going to jump on the Love Costa Mesa Day bandwagon, if only to show some terrific pictures from that day. And this is just a sampling of the fun we had at the morning rally, some of the projects that took place, and the lunch and celebration at the end here at City Hall. I want to thank the council, the more than 1,800 volunteers who were here on Saturday, and city staff members who put in a lot of time and work. So thank you all, and we're already looking forward to next year. Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Gamarros talked about the park expansion meetings that have been taking place. Those are very important meetings with the community to get some input on improvements to Ketchup Leibold, Shalimar Park, and Costa Mesa Skate Park. In total, we had about 250 participants in those meetings. So the next steps for Ketchum Leibold and Shalimar will be for the consultants to finalize the designs, and those will be available to the public very soon. And for the skate park, there'll be one more community meeting coming up in the future. This week is also Public Works and National Emergency Medical Services Week. We'd like to honor and thank the many employees we have in those fields, from our maintenance, transportation, and engineering teams to our fire and rescue and police department. Thank you. These individuals work 24/7 to assist our residents in a variety of ways. And for that, we're very grateful for their service. We have an opening for a park commissioner. The city is recruiting for a member of the Parks and Community Services Commission. This appointment would be made by Councilmember Gamarros. The commission meets on the second Thursday of each month and serves as an advisory body to the city council and works with various city departments on issues pertaining to parks, parkways, recreation, and community services. Residents who are interested in applying can obtain a form, a commission application form, from the city clerk's office or visit the city's website. The deadline to apply is Monday, June 3rd at 5:00 PM. And the appointment hearing on this is scheduled tentatively for June 18th. And finally, this is just a reminder that Memorial Day is coming up on Monday, May 27th. Memorial Day is a day to honor those members of the military who gave the ultimate sacrifice and lost their lives in battle. Their service to our country should never be forgotten. And I urge you to take this time to keep their families and loved ones in your prayers, not just on Memorial Day, but every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we have our city attorney report, Ms. Hall Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that unfortunately, many who lost members of their family to, in military service, never have a place to go visit their family member. Some of them are at the bottom of the ocean. Some of them are missing in action and buried in jungles somewhere. So as you recall and visit the graves of those who served, who are in a safe place, literally, where their families can visit them, please think about the family members who have no place to go to visit those, their loved ones on Memorial Day this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Number five has been pulled by a member of staff. Sorry, it's a member of the public, I spoke. Member of the public. And so would somebody like to make a motion on the balance? Councilmember Chavez?
I'd like to move to approve consent calendar.
Second by Harland. Let's, if there's no comments, let's call them.
No comment.
Oh, you got a comment?
I just, I recuse myself for privacy.
Excellent. So noted recusal for Councilmember Gamarros on consent calendar item number three. With that, can we call for the question?
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, so now we'll call number five. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
This is the Professional Services Agreement for On-Call Staff Support and Program Management Services for Various Parks Projects. Pulled by a member of the public who was on Zoom.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment.
Do you want to go in the chambers first? There's anybody in the chambers or to start with?
Oh, there's nobody in the chambers to speak on this matter, right? So, so let's go to Zoom.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. I had hoped that staff had a presentation because it would be enlightening to everyone, I think. But this caught my eye because it has to do with the upcoming work on Fairview Park. But this caught my eye because it has to do with the upcoming work on Fairview Park. Despite more than 40 years of either drafting contracts or working on enforcing them, I'm struggling with this. Here we have two contracts with consultants for on-call staffing for the listed projects. Per the RFP, the quote "not to exceed fee" unquote was supposed to be contained in the consultant's covered lever, letter, but neither consultant provided that in their letters. The agenda report states that the compensation shall be paid in accordance with the rate set forth in the consultant's cost proposal, as noted in the PSAs. I searched the PSAs, but I only found hourly rate schedules. There was no "not to exceed fee" in either. What are they? Staff is also asking permission to pay these consultants, either one or both of them, an additional 650K should it become necessary. Is the total 650K or 1.3 mil? While I think I know what the answer is, I make it a practice not to work off as of assumption, so please enlighten me. I understand the city received $10 million to go to Mostly Park and Proof. That's a lot of money. As a member of the public, I would like to know how that money is being spent and who is receiving what in compensation. More information in these reports would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that?
Miss, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. Would any council member like to make a motion? Motion by Councilmember Gamaros?
Yeah, I'd like to move with staff's recommendation.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Chavez. Do you want to say anything with respect to your motion? No? Second?
Yeah, as a member of council that sits on this committee, I had the pleasure of watching the CDPG grant funding committee discuss and debate within these numbers. I feel that this is a fair representation of our community, so yeah.
That's the, this is the consent calendar item number five.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, that, you're thinking about PH2. So, sorry, PH1. But anyhow, that's fine. Would any other council members wish to be heard? Let's call for the question.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Six zero, good stuff. Okay, so now we'll go to our first public hearing, or we have one public hearing item and one new business item. That's pretty much our rest of our agenda. So let's start with the public hearing item.
Thank you. Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan Identifying Funding Priorities for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Grant Programs. Presentation by Ms. Daly, Grant Administrator.
Okay. You can hear me? Okay, once again, my name's Mikel Daly. I'm the Grant Administrator here at the City of Costa Mesa, and I am presenting the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan for the CDPG and home programs. So the city receives two federal grants each year from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. One is the Community Development Block Grant, also called CDPG, and then also the Home Investment Partnerships Grant, called HOME. The community, both of these grants have certain requirements. The CDPG grant has a requirement to meet the national objective. There's one of three. Either the elimination of slums and blight to meet an urgent need, like a declared disaster, or to benefit the low and moderate income persons in the city. And the City of Costa Mesa uses its CDPG funds for that third national objective, to benefit low and moderate income persons in the city. For the home funds, the requirement is that these funds be used to preserve and increase housing opportunities for low-income residents. So the City of Costa Mesa is considered an entitlement city, so we are entitled to receive this funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. However, there are certain administrative tasks that we have to complete in order to receive the annual allocations. One is the five-year consolidated plan. Our current consolidated plan was adopted on May 19th in 2020. It covers the fiscal year of 2021 through fiscal year 24-25. It includes a strategic plan that identifies and prioritizes housing and community needs. It identifies goals, objectives, and resources to address community needs. And it also includes an annual action plan, which is adopted in each May, in May of each year, for the use of CDPG and home funds. So in other words, it's a five-year plan, but we continue with an annual plan for each year of this five-year plan. And we are currently in the last year of the current consolidated plan. So these are some priority needs and goals that are identified in the consolidated plan. One is housing preservation, which we do by funding a housing rehab program, code enforcement, and rental housing acquisition and rehabilitation. Another is infrastructure and facility improvements. Some examples are we funded the rehabilitation to the building that the bridge shelter is in. We've also done street improvements. And this year, we are recommending to fund the replacement of the roof on the senior center. For homeless continuum of care, the way we meet this requirement is to provide supportive services and housing assistance for homeless and near homeless. Typically, that comes from our public service funds, which is the next planned goal. Public social services, so we are allowed to use up to 15% of the annual CDPG allocation to provide public social services. So this can be, and also fair housing services. So this can be other supportive services in addition to housing assistance or assistance for the homeless or near homeless. And finally, program administration, because of course, we're granted this money, we're from the federal government, we're responsible for it, so that means we need to track it and ensure that there, we have an effective and efficient delivery of our programs and services and that we're complying with all of the HUD program requirements. So the fiscal year 24-25, the city's going to receive about 1.36 million in CDPG and home funds from HUD. Just to note, so CDPG, we're going to be receiving an annual allocation of $971,431 for fiscal year 24-25. This is a 4% reduction from what we received last year. Last year, we received $1,000,000, $1,000,0560. We are also, we've identified $187,000 in prior year funds that we can use for fiscal year 24-25. And also, $30,900 in CDPG program income was received in 23-24, and we can use that for fiscal year 24-25. Just to give you a little bit of insight on these numbers, the $30,900 program income is from lien or loan repayments. We used to use CDPG funds for home rehabilitation, and back in the 90s, we received two loan payoffs this year from two loans that were granted back in the 1990s. That's where that $30,000 number comes from. The prior year funds, the $187,000, so at the beginning of the year, when we assign allocations to certain projects, if those projects get completed and don't use all of the funds, then that funds, those funds become uncommitted, and they're able to be recommitted for the following fiscal year. So that's where that money comes from. For the home program, $395,571 is the annual allocation for 24-25. This is a 22% reduction from what we received last year. Last year, we received $509,260. In addition to that, we identified $54,702 prior year admin funds that we are going to use for the 24-25 fiscal year, because we have some specific things to use those funds for, and I'll talk about that on a later slide. And then the program income we received this year for the home funds was $108,670,000, program incomes. Those were three loans that were given in the 2000s for home rehabilitation projects. They were paid back this year. So to go over the CDPG funds, that total allocation that we're using for the current allocation, plus the prior year funds and the program income, we're going to be using it for public service grants. We can use a maximum of 15% of the annual allocation for public service grants. That's why the limit is 145,714. And that's, when I say annual allocation, that's that $971,000 number. It's not the total of the 1.19. Capital projects, we have allocated $414,331. The staff is recommending that we replace the roof on the senior center. It is an eligible CDPG project. We have $385,000 for code enforcement in CDPG-eligible areas. The city is, 56% of the city is considered CDPG-eligible, and with code enforcement, we are able to fund two, approximately two and a half code officers out of 11 with those funds. The rest of the code enforcement officers are funded with general fund. We also use CDPG for housing rehab administration, so $50,000. This is basically a program delivery fee because we, our housing rehab program is here at the city. It is not administered by nonprofits, so we use CDPG funds to pay for the staffing requirements, the program delivery, like the grant, the applications and the loan documents and scope of work, all that sort of thing. And then the funds for the grants and the loans, that comes from the home program. And finally, administration is 194,286. It's capped at 20% of the annual allocation, and we are going to use $20,000 of that 194 for fair housing services. Fair housing services are required by HUD. And the way we do that is we give $20,000 to Fair Housing Foundation. They provide our fair housing services. And they're funded, we have the option to fund them either through administration or public services. But by funding them through administration, we open up additional funding in the public So the CDPG funds available for public services, as I've already stated, 145,714. We released a request for proposals. We received proposals from eight nonprofits for $240,000. Grant amounts are awarded at a minimum of $15,000 and a maximum of $30,000 to ensure that the grants are impactful and serve diverse eligible populations. And the way we review these applications after they come in is they are provided to the members of the Housing and Public Service Grants Committee. They review the applications, and then we set a date. It was March 7th, and all of the nonprofits who have submitted an application will come in and do a presentation about the services they provide. And based on all of that information, the committee comes up with funding recommendations. And I just wanted to recognize our committee. We have seven members. They're all city residents. Ricardo Ramirez, Michael To, who I believe is here, Catherine Grant, Gloria A. Fallon, Andrea Schmidt, Erin McCall-Cradoff, and Bex Hayhoe. And Bex was chosen to be the representative for the committee. She will be here tonight. She can speak to any questions that you have about their recommendations. So in summary, the CDPG public service grants, $30,000 of that 145 is going to the senior center caseworker. That is not the full salary for the senior center caseworker. It's a partially funded position with CDPG. And then the committee recommends five nonprofit groups receive a total of $115,714. The recommended categories are broken down on this slide below. We've got two grants for youth, two for seniors. That's actually the senior center caseworker and a nonprofit group, and then two for homeless This is a summary of the nonprofit applications that were submitted, how much they requested, what the program is, the services they provide, how many they plan to serve with those services, and whether or not the committee recommends them for funding, and whether or not, and how much funding was recommended. And there are a few things I need to explain about this slide. Number one is, when we had the meeting on March 7th, HUD had not announced the allocation yet. We were going based on the year, the month, the amount that we received the prior year. So, and we received 4% less. So these recommended amounts on this slide are actually 4% less than the committee recommended. Every single one has been reduced so that we could come, not go over the maximum allowed of public service funds. One other thing I want to point out on this slide is, there are two, there is one organization with two programs, Community Senior Serve, which the city has funded for many years, their meal delivery and lunch café program. I just wanted to make sure that the, them not being recommended for funding is not a reflection on the program. The committee very much supports this program. The only thing was that we had very limited funds. We had to spread it out as best we could, and so the consideration was for some of the other nonprofits that have smaller budgets. So the idea is that the grant is bigger in comparison to the total operating budget might make more of an impact if they didn't receive the money. For home funds, so the home programs designed to support housing affordability for low-income households through affordable housing development, housing rehabilitation, housing projects that are owned, developed, or sponsored by community housing development organizations. So we call those CHODOs. It's a very special type of nonprofit developer, and we are required to set aside money for them. So if we wind up with a project that is being developed by a CHODO, then we would use those funds that are set aside. Tenant-based rental assistance and administration and planning costs. I just want to make a note about the housing rehabilitation program. So we've found that with the increase in labor material costs and also the inflation that we're experiencing, we are suggesting that we, the grant amounts for the fiscal year 24-25 are increased to $15,000 for mobile homes. Right now, they're at $1,2500. And to $20,000 for single-family homes, which are currently at $17,500. I also want to note, it's not on the slide, but our housing rehabilitation program also provides loans, up to $50,000 at 0% interest. And we brought this up before, that it's been difficult to give loans from our program because of the requirements that home puts on these loans. So they cap the maximum value for a property that receives a rehab loan. And according to HUD, you can only, the after-rehab value of the home needs to be 95% of the median home price for the area. They base our area on Orange County. And so if you go to the HUD requirements and you look at it, they tell us that the median home price is $805,000 for Orange County. That means that we can only provide a rehab loan to a home that is worth $765,000 after rehab. And none of our single-family homes in Costa Mesa meet those requirements. So unfortunately, so we've had a hard time giving loans to residents in the community. We used to, I don't know if you recall, but two, I believe it was two years ago, the rehab loans were at 3%, now they're at 0%. So trying to encourage people to apply for these loans that are in need- So trying to encourage people to apply for these loans that are in need of them. Um, but I wanted to point this out because we do do this every year. What HUD allows is that if the numbers are off, you can do your own survey of your city and submit to them, um, a calculation and, um, with proof and to increase the, um, median price and therefore increasing the price of the home that you can give a loan to. And so our letter, um, to HUD, uh, based on a, um, report that was run for us by Orange Coast Title, shows the median home price in Costa Mesa is one point five million, which means that we should be able to give a rehab loan to a home worth one million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And I realize that that's, it sounds like a very expensive home, but we have some seniors that have lived in their homes for a very long time and they can't, um, maintain the homes. And the whole point of these funds are to increase, um, you know, the, to better the community. And if they don't have the money to do that, um, we want to be able to provide them with loans to do that. Okay, so the home, home funds allocation, so for the housing rehabilitation program, two hundred and fifty-five, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. That serves approximately ten grants and one loan. Um, we did do one loan this, this current year. Uh, tenant-based rental assistance is a hundred and fifty thousand. We served, um, I believe eleven this year so far. Our administrator for that program is Families Forward and they've been doing it since, um, twenty-twenty-one. Um, affordable housing, uh, so the CHODO set-aside amount is fifty-nine thousand, so that money has to just be set aside and not used unless we have an eligible project. And then the administration of thirty-nine thousand, five fifty-seven, that's the max we can take from our annual allocation. So, um, what we are, um, increasing the amount because, uh, number one, we received less home money this year, um, than we did last year, but also because we have additional admin expenses, um, we were able to identify this money because, um, in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, there was a waiver put out by HUD that we could increase the amount of our admin allocation from ten percent to twenty-five percent. And we were not, we did not use twenty-five percent of the annual allocation for those two years toward our admin funds, so we want to use them now when we really can. And the, um, those admin funds are going to be used to help pay for the consultant for the analysis of impediments. This is a report that is required every five years for HUD. Uh, five years ago, we did it as a, um, group project with several different cities in the, um, in the county and the county. We're doing the same thing. We've already started the process. Santa Ana is the lead city and they have gone out with an RFP for a consultant. We're going to pick the consultant and then, um, we will pay a portion, each city pays a portion of, for this report based on their, um, population. Uh, the other thing we want to use, we will be using the admin funds for is the cost for any, um, consulting or any sort of extra cost for the consolidated planning process. Like I mentioned, we're in the last year of the consolidated plan, so starting this coming July, we're going to be looking at the next five-year plan. And, um, any extra costs, um, should be, we should be able to help cover them with this, um, home additional administration funds. Lastly, um, we will be going out with an RFP for grants management software, um, and to integrate it with our TESSA system and our new financial ERP system. So those are the three different things that are additional costs this year that we don't always have, and that's why we, um, found some of our unexpended admin funds and added them to this current year, or to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five allocation. So lastly, um, so we're asking that you approve the recommended allocation for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five CDBG and home funds. Adopt a resolution to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five annual action plan. Authorize the city manager or her designee to submit the plan to HUD and execute all required agreements and certifications. And lastly, provide, provide direction for the Housing and Public Services Grants Committee to update the public service application guidelines and rating criteria to better align with the city's current or future community priorities and the upcoming new consolidated plan. We normally meet in September, the Housing and Public Services Grants Committee. That's when we review the report for the previous year's expenditures. Um, and we would like to take that time to, um, revamp the guidelines for the public service application so that, um, the rating criteria matches, um, the organizations that, um, meet the requirements that the, the city council has approved. And that's all I have.
Well done. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Camaros, you're first.
So first of all, Ms. Daly, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. So if I'm looking at part three here of, uh, let me a second, of the agenda report here under the draft, the last, the third to the last page has a map, CDBG map?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me along Baker Boulevard here at the top of the map, sort of? We have BG one, BG three, and BG four, and I don't want to go to the CT numbers. Can you identify what projects within that area that, do we have anything in mind for this, or what are we doing, or how are funds being allocated into what, what areas? Do you have anything identified in here? This is my district, so I want to know what we're doing here.
Okay. Um, so the only projects, so a CDBG project would be a capital improvement project and we are doing the senior center. I apologize, I don't have the map in front of me. Um, so the senior center is the, is the, um, is, is the capital improvement project. The only other projects that would be worked on would be housing, housing rehabilitation and, um, I mean, uh, I could probably let you know if there are homes that have had, most of our grants have been for mobile homes, so I don't know if mobile home parks are in your particular area.
Okay, so let's just, maybe we can come back to this. My district is District Two. I'd like to know how the funds are being allocated in my district, how the resources are being used, and who it's affecting in my community, and if we're going to use it for parks, or if it's for schools, or in front of a school, or we have, um, we've, uh, demographically speaking, um, there's some areas in my community that fit the profile requirements, so I want to see specifically how those funds are being allocated.
We could certainly provide that for Councilmember Camaros and the rest of the commis, council for that matter.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Um, slide nine of your slideshow presentation, the CDBG public service applications. Under the Boys and Girls Club, we have, uh, looks like fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars appropriated to a workforce development program. Is this a program that they submitted a request for, um, as like a grant request? And are they using, is this something for the Department of Labor? What is this workforce development program, if you know? If you don't know, that'd be something else I'd like to circle back on.
So it's a work, it, it's a workforce development program. Um, is there somebody here from the Boys and Girls Club?
I might be able to speak to it a little bit.
Oh.
If that's appropriate. Um, councilmember.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I'm familiar because this is, um, you'll see on the slide, it says previously yes. So the Boys and Girls Club merged with the organization, yes, which was Youth Employment Services. Um, and so they do, it's not, I think, it's not workforce development in the way I think you're, you're thinking of it, the larger program that we're working on.
Correct.
This is, um, uh, you know, support for resumes, support for like practicing interviews when you're interviewing for your first job, for example.
Okay.
That, that kind of detail for, um, young teens and young adults, or older teens and young adults.
Thank you, okay. When you say workforce development, this is, there's actually a Department of Labor Workforce Development Program that, okay, I thought that this is what they were going for. So anyways, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yep. Oh, yes. Let's go to Councilmember Reynolds and Councilmember Harper.
Um, yeah, great. Thank you. Very thorough report. Um, really appreciated the details and your presentation, um, proactively answered some of my questions, so thank you for that. Um, there were, um, I guess really one thing that, that stood out to me that I'm, um, want to sort of understand a little bit more and talk through, so, and that's related to the, um, Community Senior Serve program and the Meal Delivery and Lunch Cafe. Um, it's hard to feel good about not having funding for those programs. Uh, I think in prior years, at least the last couple of years, um, at least I, I understood that we had a waitlist for those programs. So I was curious if you can, you know, is, is not providing the funding here, meaning we don't have those programs, or what, what do we have in the way of meal delivery? Um, what do we have, you know, absent this funding in the way of serving seniors lunches at the senior center? Um, and is there a waitlist for those programs?
Um, I can't, I can't speak to the waitlist. I remember hearing something about that, um, but the information I have is dated. Um, and I remember it being more of a procedural thing, so the waitlist is basically you have to sign up for the program so that they, and they, you fill out an application, everything, and they put you on the list, and they have to have the right number of volunteers to be able to deliver the meals in these different areas and that sort of thing. Um, but, um, uh, and I, I also can't speak, we did actually ask during the meeting, um, we asked every single one of the organizations if they would be able to still provide the program if they did not receive the funding. And my recollection is that they said they would still provide the program if they did not receive the funding. Uh, Community Senior Serve, um, very, um, it, their programs are wonderful and I, I don't, um, but their, their, um, operating budget is in the millions, over five million. So thirty thousand dollars is a very small amount, whereas, um, if I was to pick a different organization, they may have an operating budget of maybe in the hun, in the hundred thousands, and so thirty thousand dollars makes a bigger impact. And since we had really limited funding, um, I believe that's what the committee was aiming for, but like I said.
I understand the, the logic.
Yeah.
Uh, what I'm curious is, does not providing the spending mean, you know, thirty seniors are not getting that meal delivered? Like, we don't, we don't have a supplemental program or alternative program?
No.
Okay, okay.
If I can jump in, because I was at the meeting when we were discussing, discussing this, I think the committee had the preference that we funded through general fund. Um, so the past couple of years, there's been a conversation within the committee that this is such a critical, critical part of our service to our seniors that we should fund, fund the service ourselves through a general fund, considering how small the actual amount would be. And I think this was their attempt to showcase that this service has the most funding out of the others. They felt strongly that we as council would actually just fund it through general fund. We'll hopefully fund it through general fund.
Okay, okay. Um, and so again, so we don't already have this program. I wasn't sure if this line item is incremental to a program that we already have. I don't know, Ms. Reyes, if you know, or if our director, um, community services knows.
Hi, good evening. Um, what I can do is, um, talk to the senior center staff. Um, I know that we would not, you know, provide the service. I'm not aware of us having any shortages, but I can definitely follow up with the staff and see if there is a waitlist. Um, and if we are able to fund this through general fund, we will make sure to work with the team and ensure that, you know, no one is left without a meal.
Okay, yeah. Coincidentally, at the, um, event I mentioned on Sunday at the park, I ran into a, a friend who's now working, um, part-time, uh, in the rec department, but, uh, he also volunteers with Meals on Wheels, and he brought up that, um, not only does it feel good to give that service, that, that that's, he recognizes that that social interaction may be the only social interaction for many of the seniors who are part of that program, so.
Yeah, that was critical. It was evident during the pandemic.
Hugely.
That, you know, that contact with the seniors and delivering the meals was something that our seniors looked forward to, and also our staff, you know, we wanted to make sure that, that we were doing wellness checks. So I'll definitely work with our parks team and our senior center staff to ensure that, um, if there is a need for additional funding, that we are creative and thirty thousand dollars doesn't seem like a big, uh, increase, you know, but we'll definitely look at our budget, our department budget, and see if there's any additional needs to, um, augment.
Okay. I just think we're looking for thirty plus thirty.
Plus, yeah, yes.
Okay. Um, I think that was it. Can you, um, describe the timing for the next five-year plan? You mentioned starting a, I think an RFP is going out. It sounds like we're doing, um, or the plan is to do something in collaboration with other cities. Can you just describe a little bit more of the process, but more importantly, the timing?
Um, there are two different plans. So one is already in the works, is the analysis of impediments for fair, fair housing. Um, and that is, um, right now, it's headed by the City of Santa Ana, and includes the County of Orange and all thirty-four cities. Um, so they've sent out the RFP, they got some responses. We're reviewing the, uh, responses and then hope to get a consultant, um, on board to do that for us. Um, so we are participating, um, in that joint venture. As far as the consolidated plan, um, that would start this coming July. Um, I do have some dates mapped out. I don't have them with me, but it would start out with some community meetings, um, where we invite the community come, to come in and talk about different needs in, uh, the community and where they would like these CDBG and home funds spent, and if they want, um, different types of projects, uh, addressed than are in the current consolidated plan.
So the, the community meetings, um, could be as early as this July?
No, the whole process will start in July. I wouldn't think that the, um, meetings would be until probably, um, September or October would be the first one.
Okay, okay. Great. All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Harper.
Thank you. Ms. Daly, uh, thank you for the presentation. On page nine, could you explain something to me? The number served column, is that the number served based on the amount recommended? What is that number?
It's based on the amount requested. That's how many they plan on serving with the services, um, that they're providing.
Okay, okay. And then the specific service, I don't know. It'd be nice to know if it was, you get, included a column that was based on the recommended, how many are served. I'm looking for, um, you know what I'm saying? If you're, if you're going to give fourteen thousand, I guess, well, let me do, Boys and Girls Club, they, they requested thirty, that would serve thousand, but based on our out, outmount recommended, we're going to serve five hundred, right?
Yeah, normally we request the scope after we tell them how much they've been approved for. And then they get, give us a revised scope telling us how many they can serve with that amount.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing your process. I'm just saying from my pers, I'm trying to, and that's my, that's my other question is, well, how do you, do you have a matrix, how you rank these charities? Is there, there must be a process of some sort.
There is, and that's why we're asking tonight for direction from city council if you have any suggestions. Um, we want to review the guidelines and the rating criteria.
And that's, is that in my package that I missed? Did I miss it somewhere? Your guidelines for ranking these?
You know what? I'm not sure if it's in, it's in the packet, but it is on the city website with the applications.
Would, it be okay for you to send to the whole council maybe your, your process? And I'd be happy to give you input. I'm curious, I'm looking for local charities and I'm trying to figure out a way to analyze which are appropriate for another purpose I'm considering. So I'd love to know our process and I'd be happy to give you my feedback, and I'm sure the other council members would have input as well. So if you could send that to us, I'd appreciate it. And then this is just a curiosity, the, the federal funds we receive for CBDG, CDBG, and home, um, how is the federal government calculate that number? Is that a mystery?
It's not a mystery.
Yeah.
It's a little complicated. It's based on the population. It's based on your low-income population within your population.
Okay.
Uh, I do believe there's some information available on the HUD website, but, um, it's more complicated than I know.
Then, okay, so it would be a great thing if we never got any money, right?
No.
No, it'd be great, right? Meaning that we don't have any need, right? I'm assuming.
That, or your city's too small to receive money.
Oh, okay. Well, that's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna shrink, so we're okay there. And then eligibility, how do they compute, how do they determine eligibility? Is that based on what you just said, the low income and?
Eligibility to receive the funds?
Yeah, well, you've got a map of eligible areas in the city.
Oh, yeah.
How do they, who determine, they determine that, right?
Yes, through census blocks.
Census blocks.
Yeah, it's based on the information that's collected during the census.
Okay.
It tells, um, which areas have, so CDBG areas are fifty-one percent or more low to moderate income.
Okay.
So people earning eighty percent or less of the, um, median income.
And then this is. And then this is a harder question than I, and I was kind of, Lauren was headed a little bit, is how do you decide where to send these funds? Is it, can't be that easy to figure out? Is there a methodology or do you just find a project that makes sense?
When we pick the sub recipients, they usually serve the, the whole city. So it's where the residents come from to receive the services.
Yeah, there's no way to target.
And then the, the home funds aren't limited to a certain area. It depends on the property value.
Okay, that makes it easier. That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
So, so to follow up on what councilmember Reynolds said, I definitely support funding the Community Senior Serve. And so would there be any reason, if we made the motion, why we couldn't? By the way, really good thorough presentation. I meant to say that, too. My compliments. Very, very good, very comprehensive and, yeah. And, and good, clear. So, so if we, it seems to me like we would be able to direct staff, I guess we would be directing finance staff, not you guys, to come up with $30,000 or total $60,000 in the budget, which is going to come back to us, I think, at our next meeting to fund these projects out of general fund. You know, there's all kinds of funds that we have and our, our finance staff is rather expert at doing that. But then, and this might be a question for finance and not, you missed daily here, Mr. Drapkin, but there would seem to be a little bit inequitable in the sense that then you look at the amount requested and we're dinging these other very worthy causes, just like a small amount, because they're getting their money from CDVG. And then if we were to say, well, we're not so constrained with general fund money, then that doesn't seem fair either. So it would seem to me like if we were to color those up a little bit and get them to the full amount with general fund money, is there any reason that anyone in this chambers can think of why we wouldn't be able to direct the staff to do that tonight?
There is a requirement with CDVG funds. If you fund something with general funds, then you can't replace general funds with CD, you, you can do the opposite. You can replace CDVG funds with general funds, but you can't go backward, so.
So we, so we would be legally, like, if you just take the 21.5, right? Sorry, 28.5 that we're giving to Families Forward, we couldn't supplement that with $1,500 of general fund money to make it around 30,000?
If you wanted to do a, a separate grant.
Yeah, we did separately.
It would be something completely separate.
Yeah, completely separate.
Mr. Mayor, the concern would be that if, for example, we get a greater allocation next year and the committee chose to allocate 30,000, that HUD would say, well, no, you've, you know, the 30,000 you did last year was only 28,005 from, so that's your cap now. So that would be, that would be.
Okay. But that's going to be true whether we, whether we supplement it or not. I mean, it's just going to be the cap. That's going to be the cap.
No, it's never the cap unless we, the cap is here only because there's only so much money to go around. So if we were to have a greater allocation, for example, next year, we're able to fund their full request, we could do that.
Good. Okay, so what's the down, what is the downside risk, either legally of saying, we're, we're going to, as part of our motion today, let's say for the sake of discussion, we make this motion. I know we haven't even opened up public hearing yet, so I don't want to be presumptuous. But let's say we made a motion to say, okay, we accept the staff's, the committee's recommendations with respect to all of these amounts recommended. And in addition to that, we, we direct staff to come back as part of the budget, supplement these numbers, and increase them, you know, and, and also fund Community Senior Serve.
I would say if we're going to do that, we should do it outside of the annual action plan and have it be nothing to do with this HUD funding. The other thing, I just want to make sure if we do completely, if we do fund Community Senior Serve with $30,000 of, or $60,000 of general fund, they cannot apply for CDVG funds next year. They will have to be funded by the general fund again or receive that money from somewhere else for 12 months before they'll be eligible for CDVG funding again.
That's Community Serve?
Yeah.
All right. But I mean, you know, so what? They're not getting it anyway, so that's, that doesn't seem like they would object to that. They can always, they can always reject the money if that's a concern. So anyway, but I think, I think you, I think I have your answer, I have my answer to the question. It's really two separate things, and we wouldn't be voting on the funding of the supplements that I'm describing. We would just be directing staff to come back later so we can vote on it. We would only be voting on these items tonight.
Okay.
Do you understand?
Yeah.
I think that'd be cool. But if that's not cool when a motion comes up, I'm Nostradamus, I think a motion like that might come up that gives you a heads up, you can think of the reason why we shouldn't do that. Okay, any, anybody else?
Yeah, sorry, I do have a follow-up. Could we get, so I'm looking at page nine of the staff report, and that's where it seems to discuss some of the changes that the committee members may be recommended to the ratings. Could we get some feedback on that? Bex, are you prepared to describe whether there were specific recommendations to the, like, ratings or grading scale that the committee had? I'll, I'll read you what we have here. It just says, you know, looking for council to consider possible changes to the maximum and minimum grant amounts, ratings that reflect a funding preference for small charities that are making a big difference, and weighted ratings that reflect the impact of a small CDVG grant on the applicant organization's total operating budget. So were there specific recommendations that you wanted our feedback on?
Please forgive me, I don't have the rating sheet in front of me. Good evening, city councilmembers. Bex Seho, member of the committee. We also wanted to be able to review the process that was underway, as well as the application form. So there, it really was sort of from start to finish, what is the experience like for the agencies that are applying for the funding, making sure that the application form asks the right questions to ensure that we're able to determine if the program aligns with the city's action plan. So, so they really was just trying to make sure there's better coordination and alignment of the application process, as well as the ranking criteria to achieve the city's goals and desired outcomes.
Got it. Did you have a recommendation on how to address that recommendation, I guess? So my understanding is, you, you said the next meeting, is it to review, the next set of applications would be in September? Or would it be at the September meeting of the committee that they could have those discussions and then make specific recommendations for council?
Yeah, the discussion at, at the March meeting was to come back in September for our CAPER review. It's the end-of-the-year report review. And include in that a review of the guidelines and the rating criteria to kind of revamp them based on what our current, you know, interests are for the, and what the city councils, because you recently had a strategic planning session, correct? So maybe some information from that would be attributed to that. And then we would bring that back, either as old business or as on the consent calendar as the new application, so that we have it, the guidelines and the new application ready to go for this new consolidated planning cycle.
Okay. So what Bex described, it sounds like you're already planning to do in the September meeting of the committee.
Yes, we're asking for your direction as far as if you want us to consider anything during that committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Shall we open it up to the public, open the public comment? Everybody gets three minutes. All right, Bex, do you want to go?
I would love to. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the robust dialogue that has been happening around this item. And on behalf of the committee, I want to say thank you to the staff who prepared us really well for our meeting. A huge thank you to all of the agencies who came and gave us fantastic presentations about their work. As you heard, it was a night of robust discussion and difficult decisions when there are so many who are in need in Costa Mesa. The committee really worked to focus on the sub-populations that the city council has identified they want to make investments in, people experiencing homelessness, seniors, and youth. As you heard during the presentations, we had the opportunity to ask questions. And one of those questions was, if you were not to be awarded at the amount that you have requested, what would happen to the program? And that is where we really felt as the committee that the Senior Serve program, their answer was that the program would continue, that the meals would be provided, that the outcomes would be delivered. As you heard, their budget was over $5 million, and the 30,000 request from the CDVG was a drop in the bucket that they felt that they would, with absolute confidence, they would have covered. And I'm sure they will be excited to hear from you about the general fund opportunity, as that's something we felt would really solidify the city's commitment to serving older adults. We also looked at not duplication of funding of activities of the different agencies. I wanted to make sure that the funding slate we brought before you was providing diverse opportunities for investment. And so with that, I will recuse myself and go and sit down, and thank you for your discussion tonight.
Thank you. Yes, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Stevens and esteemed councilmembers. My name is Shelby Feliciano Sabala, and I am with Project Hope Alliance. I'm here to say thank you for your support in supporting our youth experiencing homelessness in Costa Mesa. We have worked in this community for over 10 years, and in direct partnership with our school campuses, every day doing onsite embedded case management to ensure that all of our youth have the resources and support to thrive regardless of their living situation. This is why 93% of our high school seniors graduated high school last year. This isn't because they became smarter. It isn't because they tried harder. It is because we are just there to alleviate barriers, ensure enriching educational, college, and career experiences for them so they can pursue their passions, pursue sports, go to prom and have that typical school experience, and just be youth and dream about their future. We appreciate your support of our mission to end generational homelessness through prevention and wraparound support for our youth, and we look forward to impacting more youth's lives this next fiscal year and are extremely thankful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. A very good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Nishtha Mohindra. I'm going to fix this. My name is Nishtha Mohindra, and I serve as a chief program officer with Families Forward. And I'm joined here today with my colleague, Cruz Bermudez, who's sitting out there. And in speaking on behalf of Families Forward, just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for your leadership. I have a few comments that I wanted to read through this evening. We would like to commend the city of Costa Mesa for its dedicated efforts in supporting families and addressing housing insecurity. In the past fiscal year, Families Forward has been instrumental in preventing and ending family homelessness for 103 households, which comprised of 332 Costa Mesa residents. And although that might not seem like a big number, is a really big number for us to work through in the last fiscal year, and that demand continues to increase. One of our biggest achievements in this last year was not only being successful in completely spending down the funds that we were able to receive with your support, but serving and housing 12 families through the TBRA program. We continue to permanently house 55 Costa Mesa residents in and across two of our housing, affordable housing projects. And everyone is doing well, and some of the, one of the projects that you were all really involved in, and thank you again for your leadership there. Our focus remains on aiding low-income families and extremely low-income families. In the last year, 54% of our housing clients classified as extremely low-income and low-income. And it is also worth noting that 69% of these families are led by single mothers, highlighting the need for continued support for these households. We appreciate the city's unwavering support and look forward to continuing to serve the residents of Costa Mesa. Thank you for your leadership, for your time, and thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, okay, Raina, are you going to come up? So remember, we have a problem with our little dinger, so when I go like this, means you have one more minute.
Yes. Good evening again, council. I do want to say thank you so much for everyone's kind words about Love Costa Mesa Day, and I'm so glad that you guys enjoyed it and look forward to next year. So two years ago, out of Love Costa Mesa Day, a year-round program called Labors of Love was birthed. So Labors of Love seeks to identify neighbors in need and provide free manual labor service projects that include landscaping, painting, property maintenance, and minor repairs. I do want to thank the city for rewarding us this CDVG grant two years in a row that allowed us to rally the community on a year-round basis to meet the needs of our disabled, low-income, and senior neighbors. We've been able to partner with code enforcement, senior center, churches, nonprofits, and residents to help identify these neighbors who need our help. Last year, we were granted the full amount of $30,000 that allowed me to hire a dedicated, part-time program staff who spends her time with our project leaders, our neighbors in need, and volunteers on a more focused effort. This focused effort is crucial to the quality of the program and for our neighbors to feel seen, heard, and loved. I am here to ask council once again to fund the full amount if possible and allow us to continue this good work year-round. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Birdie Kubar, and I'm the coordinator for Labors of Love. I just wanted to say that what we're trying to build and what we're trying to foster is connection between the folks in our community who desire to serve and love those in need, who have extra to give, and connecting them with the needs in the community, and in that way creating some synergy and some awareness that's so natural that we would reach out and help our neighbor, and it's becoming a movement. It's starting to really take root and flourish, and we want to continue to create leaders who can create leaders. So in community development, what you want is sustainability. What you need are people and time. And so with the funds, we're able to grow and foster leaders who will continue to grow and foster other leaders. So thanks for your support and all that.
Thank you. Yes, Bob?
I would like to thank the staff and the committee for an excellent job and all the supporters from the public. I wish to add my voice and support for you guys, for the council to pass this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, closed public comment. Let me get, oh, oh, oh.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a motion. Yeah, I was kind of leading up to that. And look at, you're going to second it. So here's the, here's the motion I'd like to make. I, I think, by the way, great job again. I'd like to accept the staff recommendation on all of the items pertaining to the report. In addition to that, and separate from that, I'd like to direct the staff, the finance staff, to come back through the budget process and do the following. Supplement Families Forward to 30, so, so there would be, I, I, I'm going to go through this, I'm going to say the 30, but you can just, it's separate from what the, the CDVG. So it's just, in this case, it's 1,500. Human options, same thing, supplement to get them to 30, so that's 1,500. Project Hope Alliance, I'm not going to do the math, but get them to, get them to 30. Trellis for Labors of Love, get them to 30. And then 30 for meal delivery and 30 for lunch cafe. Now, the reason I'm, I'm doing this, oh, sorry, did I get a, can I get a second on that one? Okay, good, I got a second. So the reason I'm doing that is because, you know, to councilmember Reynolds' point, we, we don't, don't want to, if anything, we, we wanted to increase our. we don't, don't want to, if anything, we wanted to increase our, I think, commitment to delivering meals and having that connection with the seniors. And even if they are a fully funded nonprofit, I think it's an important gesture to show that the city has skin in the game in this very important effort. And I do believe that there's places in the budget that our creative finance staff can find to fund those programs. As to Labors of Love, I've seen that project in action, and that is really going into where our code enforcement identifies people that need help to bring their, their homes up to code, and then Labors of Love comes in and provides materials and provides labor to do that. Not only is that a force multiplier for our code enforcement department, who actually, by the way, participates in those projects, but it also helps all of the residents around those affected residents that are, that Labors of Love goes into. So it's a multiplier effect in a neighborhood, and that's very important. And the other thing too is, they, to my knowledge, they do not say no. So when we need them, when we need their help, they're there for us. And I think, you know, listen, we've already talked about, at length, about Love Costa Mesa Day. I think we need to put our money where our mouth is. And then the others, okay, Project Hope Alliance, you know, they're, you know, I don't need to say much about them. They're, they're completely solid, and they help kids that are trying to overcome McKenney-Venta homelessness. What could be more important to the core, our core values than that? And then the others are just supplement them up to get what they would get if the, if, if the feds didn't cut our allocation. So that's the basis of my motion. Does anybody else want to be heard a second?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, for your articulate points on this. And all I will say is two quick things. One, I want to thank everyone that applied and the committee for making the tough recommendations. I want to thank staff or council for being bold and moving us to fund on our own part of the Senior Serve Program, but also the fact that we're going to give everyone else, most of everyone else, the full ask. Budgets are, budgets are a reflection of our values, and this is a good motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. Fully support the motion. I'm glad we're going to make sure that we've got funding to continue serving our seniors lunch and with meal delivery. And I just wanted to comment on some of the potential program changes. I support, I think, all of the suggested changes here, a preference for small charities. I think Labors of Love is a good example of that, right? Like a new organization that's coming up and through seed funding through the city is able to grow and grow and will maybe one day have that $5 million budget that another organization has. I think the weighted ratings to reflect the impact of a small grant, again, same example, right? How can we use this money to really help grow the number and strength of CBOs working in our, in our community? I know that maybe it was five, four or five years ago now, we did set a minimum grant amount, and that was because of the administrative cost of like turning in all of the paperwork. So I know you're aware of that. I'm open if there's a good reason to change that, but I just wanted to make sure that that history was, was known on why there's a minimum grant size. If TESSA and the grant funding software that you mentioned can streamline that process and more money can go to direct services and not grant administration, that's, that's fantastic. So, thank you.
Okay. Did you wish to be heard about anything? Are you good? We're good? Are we good? Can we call for the question?
Well, the deputy city manager has some additional information regarding the questions you asked about meal service delivery.
Oh.
For your consideration.
Okay, do you think it's, okay, whatever, whatever anybody wants to say, if it's going to, think it's going to be important to our vote, yes, go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor. This is Mark Kube, budget manager. So we will come back on June 4th with general fund options for your request.
I appreciate it, thank you. That is if the vote wins, if we win, okay? All right, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you, council. Now, let's, our last item is new business item number one, and it looks like Mr. Dodaro is ready for prime time, so let's read the, read the item, please, Madam Clerk.
Upgrades to audiovisual equipment and broadcast system presentation by Mr. Dodaro, Public Information Officer.
All right, Mr. Dodaro, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm accompanied by Hadassah Jaeger from our, she's the Assistant City Manager from the City Manager's Office, Assistant to the City Manager, I'm sorry. She was very instrumental in putting together this, both the presentation and the staff reports. I want to make sure she gets credit for that. So I need to put my, pull this up. Okay, so I have a little quick, not a robust, not a robust presentation, but a very quick presentation on why we are for you today with this item. So a little history about our AV equipment. We first got approval for that back in 2013, and then we went up for bid, RFP bid specifications designed by Triton, who is our consultant today in 2015. And then in 2018 is when we purchased what we call the Crestone DM system, purchased that then, and then we installed it, and then our meetings began again in 2019 here in the chambers. If you remember what the chambers used to look like, we have a little picture to share with you, just kind of remind you of where we were and where we are today. We used to have those big monitors, big bulky monitors, and now we have six monitors in the chambers. And we have a very, you know, state-of-the-art system as far as our AV system goes and our voting system. We're very proud of the fact that we offer the meeting not only on Costa Mesa TV, but also it is live-streamed over YouTube, and it's also offered on Zoom, which is something that not every city does. So here are the components of our AV broadcast system that in 2018 was a $1.75 million upgrade. And what we're asking for tonight is a piece of equipment, the Crestone Media System that I mentioned before, which we've been notified by our, by Triton, our vendor, that it is at end of life, which means that it could fail at any time. And if it did fail, we would lose the ability to do AV, both audio and visual, here in the chambers, in the, in the control room next door, in the community room, and also in Conference Room 1A. So that's our, that's it. That's my presentation. We're asking to approve the professional service agreement with Triton Technology Solutions for audiovisual and broadcasting system upgrades for the council chambers, control room, community room, and conference room 1A. Authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement and any future authorized amendments to the agreement, and then approve the budget appropriation of $238,250 from available fund balances into the informational, information technology replacement fund, 603. And tonight, we have our vendor, Kristin Tetherton from Triton is on Zoom, I believe, and she's here to answer any questions, or I can answer. I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. I don't see any lights. I just want, oh, you want, I just have one question. I'm curious, just, I don't know, this might be a city clerk question or a city attorney question. Why is this a new business item as opposed to a consent item, but like, for example, the one that we talked about in Public Works where it was substantially more money is a consent item?
I don't know that it's a legal question, but I'll do my best. Because I think it involves such a significant appropriation at this point in time and a new agreement, I suspect that's the reason the city manager probably placed it as new business on the agenda.
Okay. Just curious. Yes, do you have a question?
Yes, okay. Mr. Dodaro. So if my math is correct, it's about a six-year lifespan, five to six-year lifespan for the equipment. So are we expecting in five or six years to make a similar decision and appropriation?
I'll probably punt that over to Kristin Tetherton from Triton, but I believe that in, in good times, the system would be, would, would last for about eight years. But because of, and I know I had a discussion with another council member about the pandemic, but because of the pandemic, we had some issues with supply chain and things like that that actually kind of forced this particular system to, towards its end of life, so. But Kristin, would you like to weigh in on that at all?
Sure. Thank you for inviting me today. I, the Crestone DM system is the infrastructure that runs all the audiovisual within the chamber, the community room, and conference room 1A. And the issue is, is Crestone had massive part issues sourcing during COVID, during the pandemic, I should say. And they had to discontinue a lot of their product lines. They've always been a very stable, viable company, but they were impacted greatly from the pandemic. So there have been, you know, some issues here and there, and the products you have that is like the backbone of all the audiovisual systems is not supported from Crestone any longer. So we're looking at replacing the system with more redundancy, backup to prevent this from the future. And it is correct to assume that the system's lifespan is probably eight years or so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You know, with my, if I could interject one comment, I always thought end of life and the technology world more, more meant, and was about the company's desire to continue maintenance on it. So I've had products for 20 years that have an end of life suddenly because they decide it's the end of life. There's no way to maintain them is the point, and how long technology lasts, sometimes it can be a lot longer than eight years, but that's my comment. And yeah, I kind of thought this should be a consent calendar item as well, but I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Yes, Commissioner.
All right. Hello, members of the city council. So as most of you probably know, I spent two and a half years on the Active Transportation Committee, and now they meet in the conference room out in the back. And there's no, like, audiovisual record of any of those meetings, any of the committee meetings that happened in that room. So I would hope that as part of this is some way to either just with audio record as OCTA meetings do, or like also visual as our commission and council meetings are, record the committee meetings so that the record of those meetings isn't only through the minutes, but also some form of, you know, audiovisual kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Roberto, please.
Roberto, you have the floor.
Hi, Mayor and City Council, it's Roberto with Resilience Orange County. Thank you so much. I was reading the report on the awards that you all have in relationship to making the meetings very accessible. I think that's really great, particularly to the Latino community, the Spanish-speaking community. I know you provide the in-person interpretation. That's very helpful. Thank you so much for continuing those services. On your 2020 census website, redistricting Costa Mesa, you have the map NDC, map 115, and there it kind of breaks down various information. One of it is languages spoken at home. If you look at Spanish, overall, 29% of the city speaks Spanish as their primary language spoken at home, 29%, almost one-third, well practically one-third. By district, the highest district, 70%, District 4, Spanish is the primary language spoken at home, followed by District 5, which is that 35%. So I, engaging with some of the community members from the public, from Costa Mesa Unidos, folks, the, on YouTube, for instance, that is only provided in English. And so in our neighboring city of Santana, there is, YouTube is provided, there's a simultaneous English and Spanish. And so that's another way that the Spanish community, Spanish-speaking community is able to tune into the city council meetings for those that can't attend in person. So I encourage you to look into the possible costs for providing Spanish, a Spanish version of the city council meeting on YouTube. And those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Roberto. That's an excellent comment. Anybody else on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, closed public comments. Okay, anybody else want to make a motion? I can make it. I'll make the motion to approve staff's recommendation, and also I'll, I'll say for the staff, at, at some point in time, you know, to look into making the meetings more accessible to Spanish-speaking, Spanish-speaking residents. Second, by Councilmember Harper, is that good?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, I'm sure that this will pass 6-0, but just for, for the benefit of the public, we, maybe we take for granted what we have here, but we shouldn't. We do have the gold standard in terms of accessibility, quality of the video, quality of the audio, the number of platforms it streams over, the, how quickly it gets up into, into the archives, how long it stays in the archives. And to prove that, when I, we're going through this process, bringing the OCTA into the 21st century, and when they look at the different options, they use Costa Mesa as the number one Cadillac option in the county. We, we're, we got an A rating from the Voice of OC. And in addition to that, this is just the blocking and tackling stuff that we're talking about. In addition to that, our Costa Mesa TV staff provides tremendous amount of creativity and that really I don't think anybody has a peer in, in terms of what our staff does. So I have to say that, in that respect, I'm glad it was on, off the consent calendar. Anybody else? Don, I mean, sorry, Councilmember Harper, do you have anything? Okay, let's call for the question. Okay, we don't have any more.
Motion carries 6-0.
We don't have any more items. Thank you very much for that, council. Just want to end the meeting and adjourn the meeting on behalf of my friend, John McLucky. As I, when I was speaking earlier, I was kind of emotional. I'm not sure that I made two points, which is that John is survived by his wife Kathy and his son JT, who is the player on my team, Tyler, Daniel, and his grandson James. Maybe I did say that, I can't remember. And he was a neighbor of mine on Shantar, I can't remember if I said that. I just can't believe I'm not going to see the guy anymore. So in, in his honor and memory, let's adjourn the meeting on behalf of John McLucky, who gave so much to the community.